Okay, the next item that we're here to discuss is the school budget. And I would like to start off myself in saying I would like to begin our meeting tonight by thanking everybody for attending and I feel and I and my fellow City Month members sincerely appreciate all of our work that the school board and the administration has put into this school budget. I realize this is a simple process that required hundreds of hours of work to produce and is not going to be taken lightly by any member of this committee tonight. We are here tonight to discuss the challenges our schools will be facing during these trying times. However, I don't need to remind everyone in attendance or watching here tonight that we're not only we are not the only ones who are struggling to stay afloat. Our state, other cities, small businesses here in our community, and especially our Danbury families are dealing day to day with making tough choices as the cost of food and doing business have gone up and many paychecks have decreased and some not having paychecks at all. So we have a lot to cover tonight, so please try to make your statements short and to the point and try not to duplicate any other statements that have been stated. Thank you. I think I will.
Irving.
Irving.
Yes, Irving. Stand.
Mr. Fox, would you like to address your point?
Once again, my name is Irving Fox. I'm a private official here with the drive and the chairman of the Department of Education. Thank you to the committee for having this session and to make us to discuss the budget further. When we last spoke roughly two weeks ago, the budget that was before you, the budget that the board had adopted, was not a budget that retained all of the services that the district provides to the area. Understanding that, as Mr. Daniels pointed out, that we're living in unprecedented economic times, the board recognized that and spent roughly the latter part of the last three to four months meeting in various sessions, many of which members of the committee attended in terms of trying to find the best possible solution to run the school district at the least possible cost given in economic climate. So with that in mind, the board adopted this budget, roughly a 3.8% increase over previous levels. And although that is an increase in the prior year, it is a million dollars short of what the district needs to operate as it stands today. And so given that the board had taken that million dollars of service reductions at its budget, the board's position at that time was to try and stay away from the classroom as much as possible. And over the last several years, as budget reductions have come through, we've kind of peeled away at some of our support services, trying to keep the classrooms at that. I think as we adopted our last our budget that was sent to the mayor's office, that was probably our last attempt to try and do that without any of the classroom. And even with that, we did reduce by about four or five teachers, about eight FTEs altogether. Keeping in mind, we wanted to minimize the impact to the students. With the mayor's proposal as it is presented, that represents about a $2.3 million reduction off the board even quickly. And in the board's estimation, we simply cannot stay away from the classroom any longer. And what you'll hear tonight from our administration, from our finance committee, is probably the product of several months of work and discussion, a lot of which you've attended, to go over the scenarios that you want.
No, I was just gonna ask you.
My mouth is very dry. Sorry.
You're making me.
But the the $2.3 million reduction, what you'll see tonight as our finance committee and our administration will present, is the product of several months of discussions, looking at various scenarios, and then finally minimizing the impact of what the ultimate number is going to be. But the scenarios we'll see, because the budget's not yet filed, will not only reflect what our or what the superintendent's recommendations at this point for those additional reductions, but should the budget be reduced any further, again, we've looked at those scenarios as well. So at least the committee can have appreciation for what the impact to the educational community would be as a result of our economic climate and our ability to pay for the system. So with that, I will turn that over to the chairman of our finance committee, Mr. Mike Fazio. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Would you like some water? I'm Mike Fazio, and also can call me on the chairman of the Board of Education Finance Committee.
Everyone here back there?
Yeah, we're all right.
You want to counsel, we on the board bet our task of crafting a budget that will take into account the hardships that many of our citizens now face, balancing against and providing the children of Danbury quality education, one that will not rob them of their ability to earn a living and live comfortably in the future. Last year, we worked effectively with our appropriate community city, and we were able to mitigate much of the impact of the quality of the service we provide to our children through one time plus avoidance and limitations, if we hadn't discussed that in many of our workshops. But as we have discussed with those members of the council who attended those workshops, which began back late fall, those savings are no longer available to us as options for each year. Last year, we worked with a zero increase, are now working with the mayor's proposal of a 1.79% increase over the previous budget. When you look at that, over two years, represents a 0.9% increase for each year, it's hard to believe that with approximately 8% of our operational costs tied on salaries and benefits, that we have not seen a major impact on our ability to deliver to deliver the quality education that these Danbury residents are accustomed to having in their schools. We have restructured and worked to find the out of the box solutions to the problems we have faced. To this point, we have succeeded. We have been successful. Our finance director, Bill Longo, has provided all of us at our workshop meetings, the long list of areas where we have cut costs, where we continue to look to further increase operating efficiency, or further reduce costs. And this economy, that my opinion is that the mayor's budget proposal is both fair and equitable. We thank him for his concern for the children of Danbury, for working hard, putting together a fair budget that balances the needs of the system against the taxpayers' ability to pay for the support budget paid.
Thank you.
Not to be redundant, but what we're gonna try to do tonight is have a panel of people that are out there, try to go through some questions, and then we have a revised budget recommendation that we discussed with the board, the vice that the subcommittee board. Maybe we could go through that and then answer questions that you may have.
How can I begin?
Bill is not here, Dr. West is not here. Last week, we're gonna go through the slideshow first and then go through the financials at the end, and if you look at the agenda that's at that end, the financials that will accommodate the current situation. Bill?
Evening, everybody. It's good to see you and thank you for the hype and attention. It's been a real life playing field in Danbury, a lot of schools, nine schools to sleep to have that vibrant education ability. We now have this whole set up. It will give us a harder day or opportunity for our children to have these type of experiences that most of the others should always help us say thank you for. I apologize for anybody standing in front of the screen. We're just starting with this shot, because while we're all adults here tonight, at school clubs, we're all about kids, and we always wanna use that as a backdrop. Why do we have this session tonight? Appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you, and it's critical for us, because there are some myths out there that have been there to measure weight in one region or another. And there are a lot of inactives really trying to do is clarify our fiscal work on behalf of our 25,000 kids. One of the pictures of Danbury High School, one of the most culturally diverse schools in Connecticut. True or false, last year's 0% allocation did not negative impact on the ability to educate students? It's a great question, and people have bounces back and forth, and we understand that. We had a 0% allocation. We took that and did our diligence under processes that we always use, our intent, and make this as transparent as possible for children. But in fact, it did have a significant impact on our margin. We had a couple of the loss of our early reading success program, which was a state grant, $5,000 of $1,000, and we got the premium of the rate. In a couple of early reading success grants that was sunset and with 0% allocation, this is what happened, we still haven't heard you from this conference. We lost 17 elementary media teachers. Teachers were folks that had provided direct services for children on a daily basis in all 14 of our elementary schools. The same time, we also lost 2.5 when we taught in terms of full-time equivalent, 17. They've opened up 2.5 elementary teachers. The elimination of 18.7 teachers within the sixth, seventh, eighth, tenth, and eleventh and 12th grade level. We cut 3.2 administrators, one support staff, nine non-certified staff, a total of 1.4 positions that we lost. There's a misnomer out there. Folks think that there was no impact whatsoever, in part because we offered our early retirement incentive program, E-RIP program. We were able to absorb a lot of the folks that those positions were cut because we had so many people retiring. So the net total, we only had two people that actually lost their jobs. We eliminated them through reduction of force, but in reality, 51.4 positions, well over 51 positions were actually lost in this case. And again, we can see the cultural diversity that we have. At any given day, we're between 42 and 50 languages spoken, just at the high school. True or false, District 10 has experienced a remarkable degree of growth in student achievement levels during the past four years. And we talk in terms of trend data, with one year up and one year down, really doesn't make much of a difference. Over time, it's kind of like the stock market, we're opening up doors up as they're going down. The fact of the matter is that we have had substantial growth. The Connecticut Mastery Test is the state assessment that's given in grades three, four, five, six, seven, ten, eight, and we've had significant growth. And we wanted to have a talk, and I think Mr. Longo gave the council members a handout some time back, we had growth in reading, we had growth in writing, we had growth in mathematics, all three areas that were tested. We had growth at every grade level and we had growth in every school, from third grade all the way through to the 4th grade. At the high school level, our most sophisticated, the hardest, the most rigorous assessment that we have is the AP assessment, the advanced placement. It's not a locally crafted or state crafted assessment, it's a national assessment, so it's nationally normed, meaning we can't go down the test, so we look a little bit better. That's a national test. We have substantially increased the number of kids taking the test. As a matter of fact, about five years ago, it was 54% of the students taking the AP test. We were taking AP classes. Now, the past year, we have 100% of our students in AP, taking the AP test. Secondly, we went from about 250 to about 450 kids in AP courses, and as you go from the most academically gifted out in concentric circles, what typically happens is your AP scores go down, because these are kids who traditionally have not had that kind of preparation to really allow them to not really. In fact, our scores have been stable, and the highest level score, the highest, have actually gone up over that period of time. Happy campers, which is what we like to do with our climate. True or false, the board's recommended 3.8, you heard Mr. Fox talk about, and the mayor's recommended 1.8 allocated, 1.8% allocation, have minimal impact on the district's ability to educate students. You fully go on. Ask me to go on. Before we go on, I just wanna also reiterate, we're here in hopefully what is perceived as a very respectful position. We recognize the work that you folks are doing and the fact that you're putting a lot in the hard place. We have all departments coming and banging at the walls here, saying, at least these more fired and more public institutions than education that has a taxpayer, as a parent, as an educator, as a voter, I understand all this, as if there's anybody in the room that doesn't. So we recognize how hard this is for you. We try, as I said, we do our due diligence. We came in at 3.8% because we felt that that was what was needed to do the least amount of damage. We also recognize that the best the city could do is 1.8%, and as Mr. Fazio said and Mr. Fox said, we're grateful for that and we're trying to do our very best to make it work. But we wanna make sure that everybody recognizes there will be substantial, a substantial impact on our school system. The school system that we have today is not gonna be the school system that we have next year. We're backsliding clearly, and we're gonna start looking more like larger ones instead of one of the medium sized ones, the bridge course, the Harper's, and the Hades, and the U.S. Y. Men. Either allocation will result in severe cuts to the program services and staff, and we try to frame these out for you in a way that makes sense. With our 3.81% allocation, for the 2010-2011 school, when we're going in, as we presented this to the city, we would eliminate one elementary teacher, it looks modest and relatively is, it's our elementary gifted program, elimination of four secondary teachers defined by teachers between the grade levels of six through 12, elimination of 2.4 administrators, one non-certified staff, a total of 8.4. It's hard to tell from here, we have other handouts that we can give at a later point in time. There is a disproportionate number of administrators, we made more cuts at the administrative level than we have at any public level. And we only, it looks like we're only cutting 2.4, but we only have approximately 50 people versus 800 people. A cut like that is percentage wise significant. We're also experiencing, we're experiencing a reduction of funding for our custodial services, there are constant concerns about buildings not being clean enough, we recognize that. We're going to, there are more challenges next year because of that, our professional development budget. At one point, I know that was thinking on council's part, we got $3 million a year for professional development, we weren't really sure how that came about, we get $180,000 a year. But there will be, we've already cut $55,000 out of that, and our gifted program, and it's the SUNAT program as well. That is what we requested, and those are the cuts that we have proposed internally through multiple scenarios. Reality is, if it stays at 1.8%, this is where we're actually looking at for our students. In July 1, we will have an elimination of 26.7 teachers, another 2.4 administrators, 16 non-certified staff, for a total of 46 and change, 46 of our employees. In this case, probably we lose jobs, there is no totally retirement incentive program, so there's no place for those folks to go. But we have folks that need an eternity and she wants to come back, these folks are relocated out of the district, out of the state. We hopefully will be able to absorb some of those. As of today, what we're looking at is a net reduction of 46 of our employees. Our Even Start program, reduction of funding, that's what we're eliminating out. Even Start is for young ladies who've had children, we bring them back so they won't become blockhouse, we have early childhood, we get here programs for the children, and at the same time, we educate those young women so they graduate. That program is gonna be eliminated. Closing schools, original immediate, closing and then retrofitting, elimination of special subject of the program at the middle school, this is substantial, and a lot is up at high school level as well. The overall impact, and this is probably the most important piece to see, between 2008 and 2011, so last year, this year, and next year, there will be substantial reductions in direct services to students in the area of the literacy and through our gifted program. We're gonna have increased class sizes at the elementary level. Initially, at the K-2 level, it was 20 kids per class, and at 3.5, it was 25 kids per class. This year, we went K-1 of 22, and 2 through 5 of 25. Next year, we may be looking at numbers more like 25 K-3, as we've been meeting, Mr. Bray and myself have been meeting with our principals privately. What's happening is, we already have, for example, we're going to put over at Ellsworth, that we're gonna have classes of 27 to start the school year, if we don't do anything just because of the numbers of kids who have come off. Quick parenthetical statement on that, Dr. Beluski has been spearheading, are we districting enrollment project? We've had a demographer come in who's very, very respected, we feel shelter locked schools projected to grow at 57%. That's a staggering number, it has huge implications for this. Again, we're gonna have a reduction in administrative support, teachers throughout the district. Last year, we went to a major realization, we dramatically downsized central administration. We've cut professional development, as I said, reduce or elimination of programs in the middle schools. Family and consumer science will be eliminated, technology education will be eliminated, the possibility of rural language data eliminated, and reduction or elimination of high school electives, because we just don't have the resources to do that. Full day kindergarten is on the chopping block right now, we've been talking about this for some time, just so the council members understand the dynamic. In every school, we have a small full day kindergarten, the rest are Catholic kindergarten programs. We're talking about both universal athletic care and will we be more full day kindergarten for any parents or children? And with that comes the elimination of the level of error professionals who support the kindergarten program. Closing and restructuring Milwich, as we mentioned, implementation of a paid participator of high school level athletics in code originally, it's important to understand, there's a difference here, this is not paid to play, this is paid to play the athletics piece as well as having a fee levied to be in school play, in band, chess play, in any of the extracurricular activities, corporate activities. Again, we talked about administrative positions, the custodial positions, hospital reducing school bus, how does that play out? It means that the walking distance, the radius is larger, so kids will have fun walking to school. And the body identified reductions of the parent services. And some of our kids. The district added a new curriculum to administrative high school. This is out in the community, not strictly, in reality, that's false. What we did was, we took the position of associate principal, and this is what we played out today at the camp, we had one principal, one associate principal, had three years, and four assistant principals. That was last year, the year before, the year before. This year, we had one principal, one associate principal, and four assistant principals. We did not have anybody new, other than a person who assumed the role of an existing role. The associate principal that we had for many years, it was Elwell, we knew Mr. Wells, when he retired, we replaced his associate principal position, but we increased it with emphasis on instruction at the 612 level. Historically, that position has been valued well. Although we added four more, three more schools, so it's now a place, Mr. Rogers' home place, and Lordley, with Rogers Park, there's no additional compensation for that job, so the job got bigger. There was no additional job put into place. We focused it around instruction, because the infantry corps came in saying, we need heavy focus on that, the knee osprey reporters, the new lieutenant, the president's high school said we don't want that. And we, permanent, our board members, central administration, as well as our staff members said, we need more vertical articulation from the middle school level to the high school level. So that position was recrafted to be 612. So clearly false, there was no additional person put in, it was just, we had one person retire, we replaced that position. Great to ask. Significant cost avoidance, so Mr. Longo's, when we speak with this in a little while, it's true, we did, there are substantial areas that we looked at. So where we couldn't actually save money, we avoided expenses by these creative funding. I can't say how many times we announced this, it put out of the box, you'll see tonight how many times we fought out of the box with good results. Our approach with the bargaining units, we wind through the middle of 11 unions, Mr. Bray has been very impressive at working with them, negotiated 0% increases already with two of those groups. Negotiations are ongoing with other groups, and we're seeking to have similar results. These are ongoing negotiations, so obviously we can't talk too much about it. Negotiated two furlough days, the administrative union can focus and give you back two more days. We requested furlough days for next school year from teachers in the administrative group, they was inclined to negotiate, you know, for the reasons that the unions have stated, in part because we've already given back two days, in part because we, to which it's fair to balance the entire budget on one particular bargain, you're avoiding all of this. Negotiated significant give backs in our insurance cost, we had major savings there, and in a sense, we've really played one against the others, against anthem, and this typical competitive process that many districts use, we've had great success with that through Mr. Longo's efforts. We requested midterm bargaining regarding increase in total student enrollment in middle school, the request was declined. What we mean by that is, just half of 125 students, the teacher, for most teachers at the middle school. We've asked some teachers a special subject to double that month, we put them on a stipend basis, so at any given, at any given time, we had 125 kids, we totally picked up 250. What happened was, they had that paper's degree, that project review, that kids and families who were through work, et cetera. It was a daunting request that we had, and we tried, again, to think out of the box a little bit. And then requested concessions from the bargaining for next year. This piece is a little bit trickier, I'll see if I can leave all the education speak out of it. The Elementary and Secondary Education Act has been around for decades, the most current information of that, semi-most current, is No Child Left Behind, that's the Elementary-Secondary Education, ESEA, George Bush's initiative. That is going to be a thing of the past and it's being replaced by race to the top with the Obama administration, the idea is still part of ESEA. And with that comes accountability faction. But beyond that, if the entire ESEA federal legislation went away, Connecticut passed a law around something called Cali, the Connecticut Accountability Commission, and that Connecticut Accountability Commission legislation says, what Breslin, Washington does, we are holding 169 schools in Connecticut stringently accountable to the targets that we set over a period of time, a growth model, it's probably within four or five year increments. Their stringent performance, improving expectations, like the State Department of Education is making. Reason being, some time back, a few years ago, 12 districts, 12 course districts in Connecticut who identified as districts in the community. I hate this term about, it's kind of a street term for the failing school systems. And as you might imagine, there's a well-known, there's years of long, long research, and we did a well-known study that said, tell me the socioeconomic level, any given community, anywhere in the country, don't tell me the community, and I will tell you how the test scores are. He did it already, 100 times, dead size of the American university, and he was accurate in 100% of the country. And if you look at the demographic profile, the lowest performing district started fourth, and the highest achieving district started most halfway. They have educational reference groups, which are now broken out by districts or DRGs, DRC, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I. I is the fourth, based on what happened. Danbury is H, second to the fourth. The 12 districts that went are districts I and district H. Those 12 districts last year were joined by the three others, Ansonia, Stanford, and Danbury. And we were able, although we're the seventh largest district in the state, we were able to outperform many other school systems immediately identified in the second round. But we were identified in the second round. What that means now is, the State Department of Education's ADHOP committee, it of course is chaired by the state board, the state board reps, and the commissioner of education now have us under their tutelage, in a sense, and we are held accountable to those folks as well as to the member of the board of education. We have to periodically go up there and make formal communication to them, and they're monitoring our progress over a number of years. We have submitted a plan that was approved by them. It sounds outrageous, but it's true, they have the authority, the commissioner has the authority, he does like this form of matter, to commit to replace the superintendent and the entire board of education to dissolve them. And you may have heard about this in the long haul, is it came into my, we saw, and took in my notice, we will change everything, or we may come back in time to dissolve this plan, or we will disintegrate. And the board said, you understand what you're saying, and we revamped the entire process. We learned from that, because we were identified, but not really that much real. And so we recognize the legal authority that comes from the plan. What is all this being? We now have a district enhancement plan, it's a proactive meeting with the board of education. Late May, early June, we will have to go back up there and report on our progress. There are, it's a very, very lengthy thing, and we're having to deal with you. There are hundreds of methods around that plan, that are being monitored by our own board, internally by administration, and by the state department of education. If you don't show enough growth, they come in and they go and take us over. We believe that we'll be able to demonstrate the growth, from the older slide that I showed you, all of our test scores, we threw a, every school, every grade, every very tested poll. They're thrilled that the box was made, and we are too. We want to share these two pieces with you, so as you can see, we're on the same side as you are, we recognize that, and we're with you 100%, and we recognize that there are challenges, and we need you too. And this is that albatross hanging on, and so we'll do everything in our power to get it to work. But we will be lying to you, we will say that the school system will not have money being changed at high school. We got our kids, our kids.
The handouts that you have, you have?
Yeah.
It starts with 3.81, we go through that. We asked Phil to go through there, because some of the questions that were coming up, hopefully those are more in context, some of the questions. I said a little more last night, and I'll say it here again, what's on that, on those sheets of paper, it's still flexible, we're still looking at some things that are coming in, and whether or not some of these things really add up that we can do. So before you, because the concern is, if we didn't share with you the things that might be, and you said, I wish I would have known this was happening, and that's why before you're trying to go through all of these things. That gives me, everything is going to be honest, it's not been approved by the board. Again, we have to vet some of these things out, to see if in fact, they can come in with it. But if things continue going the way that they're going, as Phil said, and we support the mayor's budget, these are the kinds of things we're going to have to look at. It also talks about, if it's slow, where areas that the school board beyond here would have to go and look at, make a determination, if this is best interest of the district and the administration, in order to do it. So we'll start with that first page of three point eight one, that we started talking about
The Board of Education approved a budget request some months ago, valued at three point eight one percent increase for the current fiscal year. While the anticipated expenses for fiscal year 2010, 2011 would require a 4.3% increase. So that summarizes to the, required 4.3%, we have the budget, set at $170.2 million. The Board of Education, the most practical amount to ask to request the city give the economic position of the city and the state, to the maximum value of 3.8%. 3.8% is $160.1 million, which left, or leaves out $1,065,000 in cost reductions, that the board has, those are part of this budget request to the council. The $1,065 built into the board's request of 3.8%, includes the following. At the elementary level, restructuring of the gifted and talented program, also known as the SAMA program, was reduced faculty by the equivalent of 1.0 full-time positions, valued at $62,500. And we propose to eliminate 14 UV interns, and we at the time proposed also to research Title I Federal Grant Fund, which transferred the cost of UV interns, costing $150,000 off of the general fund into a Title I grant. At the middle school level, we propose to restructure the gifted and talented program, which was called the word reduction of 2.0 teaching positions, valued at $132,500. To reduce one school instructional coach, valued at $70,000. And to eliminate one administrator for the endeavor program, valued at $105,000. For cumulative, 4.0 full-time equivalents at the middle school level, $37,500. Reductions to high school level. The board proposed to reduce by one teacher, at the ACE category, one FTE valued at $70,000. To eliminate one administrator for the reach program, valued at $105,000. Proposed not to fill supervising position, which at this time is vacant, valued at $65,000. To shift payment for all athletic event supervision, to gate receipts, transfer $30,000 in expenses away from the general fund. To reduce the athletic director position, from a 230-day contractual position to 211 days, for cost savings of approximately $10,000. We propose not to fill the stadium manager position, which was not filled in by the board for the current year. At the high school level, due to the value of 3.0 full-time equivalents, $280,000 cost reduction. District level, to eliminate a quartet's position of counseling administrator, valued at $40,000. To reduce one central district level secretary, by shifting the cost of the position to two grant funds. The top grant, which is Teaching American History grant, and IDIA, for a transfer savings of $55,000. A partial shift of a bilingual administrator position, valued at $50,000. Proposed eliminate financial support to even start, valued at $100,000, and to reduce our professional development account by $50,000, $55,000 apart. Cumulative value is quartet's of the position, total value of $300,000. And as after last presentation, the 3.8% budget, as requested by the Board of Education, calls for a reduction in staff of 8.4. The 8.4 is made up of 5.0 teaching positions, 2.4 administrators, and one custodial position. For approximate debt savings or cost reductions of 100,000.
Can we move on to the mayor's representative?
Yes. Second handout to this evening, about the Board of Education's mayor's recommended budget of 1.79% increase. Starting at the board's request of 3.8, $160.1 million, and the mayor's recommended budget of $113.9 million, these the Board of Education with an additional $2,268,000 of cost reductions. At this hour, we propose the following reductions to be the mayor's recommended budget. At the elementary level, we have the universal halfway kindergarten, which calls for elimination of 5.5 certified teaching positions, 11 career professionals, total value $77,000. Proposed restructure the bridge intermediate schools. We call for the elimination of a principal position, one secretary, 2.5 math specialist, 1.0 media specialist, 1.0 language arts, 1.0 nurse, and 2.0 custodial positions. Average value 6.5 positions, or the restructuring of MRI, valued at $550,000. Restructure MRI involves pushing of the KISI campus as well. Restructuring also for third grade, and third grade remains on the primary school levels. We would restructure closed MRI, transferring fourth and fifth grades to teen street intermediate. In turn, we could release one principal and add one assistant principal.
That's interruption, would you enclose the school complete?
There are other...
From district to students?
We would transfer our students to teen street intermediate. The building could remain open and be used for...
The...
I don't understand what you mean.
What that really is, with the doctor, I don't see, he's here from somewhere, right? Is that a committee, they've been looking at redistricting across the, the Scholomies Program, which is head start, was to leave the district, and leaving us with about 12 or two classrooms open. We did, the microphone looked at our numbers, and even looking at redistricting. In the course of repeating the redistricting, we came up against the challenges of this budget, and conversations started talking about, well, why if we use it for another purpose? I don't know what that purpose could be. Conversation right now is important to consider, relocating the fourth and fifth graders, and the school remain open, with the staff there, of course, the No Child Report, I'm still be there, along with some other programs, that'll be, will be relocated there. Then the board is going to have to commission, another group to look at, on the long term, how we're going to deal with some of the impact stuff that they're having with Longwood, particularly at the middle school. So it's not closed, it's just restructuring the fourth and fifth, and third, which we have a site. Which has not been voted on by the board as a consideration.
At the middle school level, reduction calls for elimination or to eliminate world languages, 7.7 FTEs, educational education program at 2.0 FTEs, family career science 2.0, and to reduce art by 2.0. Total faculty, 13.7, for a value of $960,000. Also proposed not to fill supervising position, which is vacant today at middle school, valued at $65,000. We would have an added cost in terms of supervision during lunch period. We propose to have 10 part-time individuals, and possibly three hours per day, for an added cost of $20,000. At the middle school level, the proposal calls for a reduction of 14.7 FTEs, approximately $1 million. High school level, calls reduction of three, every high school classroom teachers, valued at $110,000. And propose implement a corporate activity fee, for 1,000 estimated participants, and a flat fee of $60 per participant, $60,000. 3.0 FTEs at the high school level, due to the value $270,000. At the district cabinet level, we have identified ERIC special education grant dollars, that the federal government is available to the city of Danbury, the Board of Education for next fiscal year, valued at $220,000. We've been successful to date, through heightened competitive bidding, with current vendors sign up, with Anthem, we reduced, on the initial proposal, of approximately 12 to 13% renewal. Today, we're closer now to about 7, 7.5%. And we're not done. I believe that within the next week or so, we can realize an additional $200,000 of savings, for the bottom line for the research community. Labor settlements, as presented by Dr. Glass, through Mr. Bray's efforts, settlements that we can book as of today. We settled contracts, and cost savings of $70,000 when compared to the set assigned for next year's budget. And we propose to reduce the school bus, valued at $60,000. So the district's white level, reduction of 5.8. Our union labor, unionized labor? Which groups? All right, I'm going to turn to Mr. Bray, because I'm not sure which have settled, and which can speak.
That's a specific question.
The $70,000 of labor settlements.
Unfortunately, first of all, there are two labor settlements for next year. This particular savings is regarding a issue which now has been settled, but I deliberately disclosed that because the tender agreement has not been signed. By the time the council wants to...
So, basically, what I put on the gathering, what you're doing here, the difference between the BOE approved budget, and what the mayor's going to give you, is only an additional $1.1 million cut.
No, it's an additional $2.3 million cut, according to the board's...
Well, if you take, if you take the 3.81%,
Yes, sir.
If it's 117, but you're already doing the 113.
We're doing the 1 million anyway.
Regardless.
Regardless, we're going to do the 1 million anyway.
All right, so now we're down at 116. If you take, then you're going from 116...
Down to 113, which requires additional $3.3 million. The board's 3.8%. Superintendent, a member of cabinet, we were given the directive by Board of Education to stay clear of the classroom. Wherever, whenever possible, stay away from the classroom, trip elsewhere. We believe we were quite successful addressing the first million dollars of cuts, with the eight, approximately, impact of the actions. Unfortunately, when we move south of the 3.8, and we're looking at closer to 1.4, there's little outside areas that remain without having a direct impact to the classroom. Page two, we identify and see that for a ratio of every six employees, that we must, let's go, reduce, there is the additional cost of hearing the employee play for unemployment. We are self-funded, we have municipalities as well, which means that we pay, we're responsible for dollar for dollar for unemployment cost. So throughout our budget process, we have earmarked on a ratio of one to six, for every six FTEs, there's a seventh position that must be invested. The unemployment set aside for additional seven and a half, which is tied to the board's 3.8, moving to the 1.8, calls for an unemployment set aside of 525,000 hours. The board is currently considering an ERIC program for its administrators. We had an extremely successful ERIC program last year for our teachers and subset of our administrators. The board is currently considering a ERIC for administrators, which would theory cost around $8,000.
Do you think there is an ERIC?
Yes, early retirement incentive. As part of the restructuring, in order to accommodate a 1.8% budget, we propose to have a department head for grade 6 to 12 council, which would be a stipend position of $7,000. Earlier, the board cut quartet's of a counseling administrator, valued at $40,000. The $7,000 now is applied back to this, a $40,000 savings. So effectively, we've less saved $33,000. Cutting 40, we will offer now the stipend of $7,000, and have a department head for grade 6 to 12 council. As the board is faced with many challenges to address a 1.8 budget versus its recommended budget to the mayor for 3.8%, the board proposes this dealing, the superintendent proposes to be, to restore the gifted and talented programs at the elementary and middle school levels. So while they appear as reductions or cuts under the board's 3.8, should there, it will be in each country one way, it's clearly one way is the maximum value that the board will likely save for next year's budget, we propose now to restore the gifted and talented at elementary and middle school. And given the very number of FTE cuts at the middle school level, in terms of world languages, tech education, and other program areas, we propose to restore the middle school instructional coach. The net impact, moving from a 3.8% budget request, to a 1.8% recommended budget, is 36.7 FTEs, valued approximately $2.3 million. Now to understand the cumulative effect, the board reduced this budget by $1 billion. Today, we're faced with a possible reduction of additional $2.3 million. The cumulative effect of 4.8% required budget, to carry forward programs and services, as they are today, for this year, and to target a 1.8% outcome, we'll call for a total 26.7 teaching positions, 2.4 administrators, 11 career professionals, work custodians, and one nurse. For a total reduction of FTEs of approximately 45,000 positions.
Can you say 26.7 teacher positions? Are you, physicians or people?
In all, in all likelihood, this time it was many people. Last year, we were... How many people? Dr. Sal or Mr. Bringley?
Last year, as you know, we had a very large number of retirees. This year, obviously, we have a number only one year, you have far fewer. At this point, I believe we only know of three, that we cannot expect more than seven. And also, you should know, that whether or not a person can then take that job is very much contingent upon the certification of teacher. So I may have an elementary school teacher retiring, and cutting middle school teacher, can't have that. have that elementary school job unless they have that. Yeah, I may. So for instance, the middle school teacher who now is without a position, but also need to carry the elementary school certification and of course, every security. And given that there will be no vacancies in elementary school, also have elementary positions, it's very likely that probably all of that twenty six point seven, maybe a couple less, I'd say at least twenty five teachers.
Thank you. To Chair Elio. At this time, or in the upcoming month, month and a half, do you anticipate sending out doses to teachers that have, that are not tenured, et cetera? Have you anticipated to do that already?
Mr. Bray's.
Sure, absolutely. The way you did this here, like our council, was we do, of course, send annual notices to, to teachers who would not be able to perform in series. However, we have not proceeded with sending out releases for contract termination based on job losses. We will be doing that, as you said, probably in the next month or so. We won't do that to the board, ultimately adopts, whatever they're going to adopt. However, we are working through the union, and we will be identifying who those people will ultimately be, assuming you were to approve the mayor's budget.
How well, please? Do you, would you, at this time, have an idea how many actual teachers would, let's say, be let, let off?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be somewhere between twenty four and twenty six actual teachers.
Sure.
It is, that's, our number is twenty six point seven. We have only three retirements over, we believe a maximum of seven. And the problem is, since we're cutting at several different levels, we don't, we don't believe there's gonna be the ability to move people around that we had last year.
These, would these be most likely valuable teachers?
Sure, we hired, it will all come out of, essentially, the people who were hired the last eight years.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown, back up.
Thank you. I noticed there was the negotiations with the unions, it's eleven unions, eleven unions that are in processing negotiation. Two have been settled, or supposed to have settled, have been seven thousand dollars rated. What about the other nine?
Okay, there's, there's seven unions that have told them, the, all of them, with the exception of the food service union, they are, they're both there. We are negotiating with, the secretary union contract expires this year, we will be getting negotiations with them. The custodial union just had their re opener negotiations, but we have not ratified that yet, and that is technically agreement on that. The paraprofessionals union, we've been in act of negotiations for a new three-year contract, but that also isn't, you know, there isn't technically agreement at this time, although I believe negotiations are included. The teachers' union is, has another year on their contract, but we will begin negotiations in the summer of following year. Administrators' union, as you know, with the board did ratify agreement, which rejected by the council, that will be the second. So get that as well. The nurses' union is in negotiations with us for re opener for next year's wages. That is ongoing, and there is no settlement on that. And I guess the other one is the food service union. The food service union did give us a decrease. They, they ultimately have a zero percent increase for next year, and a two percent increase at this year. So that is a settled and ratified contract.
Mr. Mayor, please. You had a question?
If you cut twenty six point seven teaching positions, how many of those positions would want to be their impact on Medicaid accountability, aluminum legislation?
That would, to, to, to Dr. Glass and Dr. Mascherano. Say that to a principal, our fourteen elementary schools, there is not one that is not concerned, but our progression in our test board. As I mentioned, we've had four years of public improvement, some various initiatives worked as well, but with the elimination of the seventeen, like, the English specialists, it would be a big impact issue. Secondly, as you take those twenty six changed positions, looking maybe four or five at the elementary level, what that will do, will drive up our class sizes. And it doesn't seem like much to go from twenty two to twenty five, or twenty three to twenty seven, but as I share with parents, if you have three children, and we just gave them two more, you know how much bigger a job that is. Two or three or four more kids in the classroom is enormous, especially in some of the classrooms that are tiny, South Street School, there are some rooms where you have to walk like this between the desks just to get from one side of the room. So, we're not doing a boom, but we are really doing a knock. There is possible, a strong possibility that might be a progression in test boards at that level.
So that, if I understand correctly, then, I think that there would be five people that are teaching those subjects that come under this organization.
In part, at the elementary level, there's only one classroom teacher, it's always been focused at the top. We have no place to go, Mr. Fox, we said, Mr. Fox. Took this model, holes on it, and started to travel in the middle, next closest person is the classroom teacher. And off the concentric surface, he started putting, and that's like, but after the zero percent allocation took its weight, now we have nowhere else to go, but we're starting to cut, to cut the core programs. At the middle school level, the cuts will not be with teachers who are teaching Connecticut National Test subjects. It would be possibly elimination of French and Spanish, it's technology education, the old, industrial arts, young super science, and the old, those programs would be eliminated. And it would like to have, same in the high school, we've got a lot of those.
And just to, just to be fair, that's kind of where I was going with this, and not to single how impacted was, or chefs on the, can I do what the, I was wondering that, where those cuts would be coming from to try to protect these classes. It sounds to me, I ask, I'm a little.
In parts, a little bit more technical, at the middle school level, we have clusters, English, math, science, social, laser reading, twenty five, twenty five, twenty five, twenty five, a hundred and twenty five kids in there, youngsters rotate between those five teachers. If you cut teacher, there's no place for those kids to go. But when you look at the special subject areas, we can decrease enough, the special subjects, meaning art, music, this education, et cetera, we can, we can decrease in those areas, possibly eliminate the after, without taking the immediate. So as I mentioned earlier, the reason we're suggesting that we're starting to, the process of transforming into more, a larger urban, the larger ones many years ago, eliminating all these peripheral areas, and basically, we're running now as the heart of your district to hold on. So we're trying to protect the most mission critical components of our school system, but at the same time, we recognize we're tearing down that three sixty that holds that we're close to the north side.
Yeah, I'd like to do two, by the way.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to do two, by the way. You know, this went a little bit tricky, because it's a little bit quick, correct? I think we all get leaping eyed thirty, forty years when the president runs for election. And I know I get leaping eyed, when, when a president says something like, picks a village to raise a child. And I'm a great believer of that, believe. But I think the villagers are tired. And when you look at, it's not that they don't want to, but they're tired. And when you look at that, and I think it was the third chart, I'm not sure, there were a number of jobs there, and, and I want to credit you all the information, because it's marvelous, trying to sort it. But when you look, and I think it was the third chart they put up there. It started out with a bunch of jobs that are gonna be eliminated, we need to see her, and, and it looked like it came down to two jobs. So I'm trying to give a disc, yes, this impact was reasonable, but the bottom line tool of the measurement is how smart that you will allow that, students are, well. The next chart said, we were able to arrange, so my first impact, my first thought, it's a fantastic fact, these people, and yet, your students got smarter. It's not that simple, I know. But anyone that sees that, that I'm gonna be by the street, and they're gonna come and sit here, I don't understand, you know, they want no money. It's hard for anyone, I think, to grasp that part, reconcile, other jobs, and kids, and stuff.
It's, it's, it sounds counterintuitive, but reality is kind of an easy, easy answer. First of all, as you very well say, we lost more than fifty positions, but because of the early re-tempering incentive program with ERIP, a lot of our folks left, and so we were able to backfill those positions. And part of it was just most others being as conscientious as they could because of certification, it's illegal for us to put teachers to certain places, we now have the kitchen. We were able to do that, is only to people lost their job. This year, we're predicting about a bump in order for twenty five, twenty six people to actually lose their position. Secondly, what we have done, I'm gonna draw a philosophical tangent, is in perfect response of, and I'm sure of that, ultimately, a community, the village, has asked itself the question, what do we want, education for kids to be in? We are becoming leaping eyed in math and history, because that's what we're testing, that's what the accountability legislation holds us in common, to improve. It doesn't hold us in common to have hard values in the family consumer science or technology education, all those other things. We as a community have always embraced those. We still do, but there's a reality factor here, and that's why it's not us against them, or us against you, we look against anybody else, but the community, the community is an entire financially, we just don't have the resources. So tonight's presentation, this is here as after, and as forthcoming as possible, to say, this is the new reality for us, to want to share that with you, and then next year, as a community, we have to acknowledge this.
Thank you. Against this question, I'm really gonna try to refer to, to Dr. Glass or Elio, but in your presentation, and I do believe that our education program is a backbone of community, I think we should do all we can to educate our children, but the cuts that you proposed is all within, like, in your presentation is very few cuts were made outside of that classroom, at all, in my opinion. And when I look back on a spreadsheet that our funding director proposed, this in the last two years, the Board of Education expenses went up by eleven percent in two years. And our goal here is not necessarily to reduce your spending, more or less to control growth increase year to year, year to year. And, you know, last year, I think, you know, and the board presented that, they wanted a hundred and fifteen million dollars for, and we gave you that zero percent increase. But if we would have given you that increase for a hundred and fifteen million dollars, with your three percent increase that you want this year, it would be a hundred and twenty million dollars. So the goal here is not necessarily to try to cut your expenses, more or less control the growth of those expenses, and to where our growth should be. And, you know, again, going over this spreadsheet I have here, for example, you're budgeting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for custodial overtime salaries, why? Why do you need, why do you need overtime?
The first part, and then, so we don't lose it, because we're actually, what, there was a piece that has been very transparent to everybody, if you haven't seen it, we felt it, but we have, maybe we could, but they didn't. Last year, Oliver Jensen, Dr. Rupp, at one of the board, she was a central office administrator, she was in charge of signing. This year, because of cutting central office administrators, she now is in charge of seven departments. Karen Passero has replaced two, English coordinator and social studies coordinator, we eliminated that, we created just one position, all the humanities, creative and musical, so one person took the job too. Karen Ross Dally is now in charge of STEM, area science, technology, and event, we eliminated the math coordinator, we eliminated the science coordinator, so we've consolidated with the administrative team that we could, to a toleratious extent. It's also illegal for us not to have a principal in our buildings, eighteen of our administrators by law have two principals, because we have eighteen schools, we'll downsize by one next year, by closing the operation. So part of that kind of is a simple metric that would require by law, required by law, have superintendent.
I mean, you need to pay a hundred and eighty thousand in custodial overtime. I was trying to value it. I mean, that, I mean, see, that's where I'm going, you know, I want to keep that teacher in the classroom, I want to keep those three hammer high school teachers in the classroom, how do we do that? I mean, I mean, you have to, the Board of Education has to weigh that option, is it more important to pay a hundred and eighty thousand in custodial overtime, which is, again, after a normal outage, or put a teacher in a classroom? So if I had that choice, I'll pay the hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the teachers, and that's where it belongs, it belongs in the classroom, it doesn't belong for a hundred and eighty thousand in custodial overtime, ten thousand dollars for a part time or something. I think, if you go through this list that we have here, it increases, are enormous increases. And these are expenses that are outside of your circle that we presented, it's not the classroom, it's the outer part, that's custodians, it's the administrative, the overhead expense that you did not mention at all, you do so.
We actually agree with you, just know that we struggled with this all the time, so we're on the same page. These fellows can explain to you why we're going.
Let's explain custodians. Part of the problem, the custodial, we are mostly understaffed, we have not enough custodians to do the job. We have two vacant custodial positions, and I bet custodial in middle schools, and I bet custodial at the high school, who also do custodial work, they don't just act as custodians. Problem is, if we were to, we'd have to do a balance, and we can either hire more custodians at fifty thousand dollars a piece, or we can try to juggle a bit of overtime and tests, which is what we try to do, but ultimately, the union, they have a party group, party group entitled to work, and we're very limited in how we can work around that people, but we are understaffed by any measure. So that's the answer to your question.
Do you have no point in asking?
Well, you have to make a choice then, again, as Dr. Glass said, we have to make a choice of how you want your schools to work, because we have to make a choice of how you want the schools to reclaim, or would you rather have an extra teacher, or would you rather have all your schools be claimed? That's the problem, we've been put in a position, we're making some very tough choices, but we're making them knowing all the facts.
Dr. Elio, can you claim, I know you mentioned technology services before, Elio?
Yes, yes.
Again, two years ago, that budget was fifty seven thousand dollars, and now it's two hundred million dollars. Do you want to add one piece of credit?
Yes, in much part, it's the licensing requirements that we have on our shoulders. We are updated with all of our licensing fees with Microsoft and other, other programs as well. We walk, a couple of years ago, we informed the council, or the request to replace switches, or a certain amount of, of operations that we want with the, 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 the essence of technology, this, that was proposed. So we have funded the, possibly two hundred thousand dollars.
You have a contractual obligation?
Contract, in contractual, the sense is that by applying law, we require to have certificates on all of our software.
That, that, can you hear?
Just every year.
Can you, can you upgrade your software any use?
It's not a matter of upgrading your software, it's, it's a matter of staying in the medium of compliance, licensing fees.
So research and.
That is correct.
So it means we have more key.
Not necessarily that we have more machines this year, so that's the catch up that was required of the Board of Education for many a years, and then last year, we, we, we need to be in compliance.
Again, I'm gonna, again, maintenance, for example, in this class, that is four hundred thousand dollars. What are you proposing that we have to maintain, you need that? You mean that? Do you plan on, for example, for $400,000, what's, what do you need?
Our schools, repairs, our custodial maintenance staff, supplies. I mean, if we take a look, we go back to the custodial issue, custodial group averages about 70, 75 employees. At even an average pay of $50,000, you're looking at about $4 million, $4.5 million in cost pool. So when we presented or looked at a percentage of $180,000, $4.5 million allows for a 3% of cost overrun in terms of OT. It's not as though we're spending $180,000, which is the absolute term, $180,000, it amounts to $0.25 more on the ballot. It amounts to a 3% increase per dollar on a per basic employee.
In June of '09, there was $225,000. We're proposing $30,000 now, so what, what would cause that to increase?
We have many other contractual obligations. We came before the board on the Honeywell proposal.
That's all?
That's all built in.
And there's no savings at that?
There's savings in the utilities line items. We recognize our best ability to give all of the efforts that the city and the Board of Education has made over the years in terms of the $100 phases, to recognize, realize cost savings in the future.
Mr. Brown?
Oh, thank you, ma'am. For my, a couple of comments. First, I realize that, and I thank you very much for presenting Dr. Glass and all of you for presenting your viewpoints on what's going on regarding the budget. I realize that the most important commodity is our children, the children and our students, and that we want to do all that is possible to give them the best education that we can possibly do. But at the same token, we have to, we have to take a hard look at the actual Danbury taxpayer, especially to those people that are on fixed incomes. Social Security benefits this year, 0%. Retired teachers, less than, less than 0.5, less than a half a percent raise. Disabled American veterans, 0% raises. My point being is that it's a very difficult time, and we want to do what's best for the kids, certainly. And they deserve that. But we also have, have to think about our retirees, our people on fixed income, they just can't handle anymore. I mean, we have people that in this area are losing their homes, and they're having a very difficult time. Now, I know that the cabinet level, I know that this cabinet level, you're a brain trust, and I don't mean that to mock you or anything like that, but you have the abilities, you have the expertise, and if you are going to be able to lower the budget, you can do it without cutting teachers from the classroom. I know you can. It's just a matter of going and looking, as my peer has said, about certain things where you could cut. And nothing, I just hope that, whatever happens, I just hope that we insulate the young kids, the young students, from, you know, hearing or receiving anything that might be sent home to the parents, that would give them a sense of insecurity while they're in school. I mean, it's one thing if we, we come out in the media or whatever, and you say, well, things are tough. But I know that in the past, in my 34 years, there have been times that, and not you gentlemen at all, I know you would do this, have sent home letters attesting to, we're going to cut teachers, we're going to do this, and the younger children cannot, and should not be able to handle that. And they become very excited. We don't want that to happen. So it behooves you and us to make sure that those things that don't happen, because the most important commodity, again, is the children. And no matter what we fix the budget at, you as a brain trust, you have to deal with it, and you have to make it work. We're not going to teach ourselves, and we're not going to teach the adult classes. Simple as that.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, Mr. Riley. A lot of these comments are making over here to Elio and Dr. South. You should also be making over to the Board of Education members over here. They're the ones that presented these, helped with these cuts. So we'd like to hear from you, we'd like to stand and speak on some of the comments made up here.
I understand, I can see where Congressman Riley is coming from, but I understand with a passion, we're trying to, you know, on the one hand, balance the needs of people watching sometimes, people can't just afford, they're over here. But if you take a step back, and you look at what the composition of our budget is, over 8% of our budget is self, and so if you combine that, coupled with our contractual obligations to pay more, and those contracts are finally settled, you know, we have a bill that we can't take, and we force the day out. And so where do you take that? I think I said at the beginning, over the last several years, carrying back some of these other lines, maybe not everyone, because of our situations that come up, but generally speaking, again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you were to ask people if we have enough tax books in the classrooms, the answer is no. If we have enough support sets, in the support structure that we have, all of those lines have been prepared back over the years through these budget cuts. We look at the zero last year, I've done the four years, every single year, the budget has been cut from what we proposed. So, again, most of those cuts have been in the form of support type services, of those tax books, for example. But when most of our budget, 80% of that is salaries, it would be very hard to find a possible to not touch the classroom. And I think as I said at the beginning, when the board adopted this budget at the outset, we had to do reductions to pay, and only make the capital down to the teachers. And again, our budget, even though we approved the budget, we actually restored money to the teachers' salaries and took money out of administrators. So the board is very mindful to stay out of the classroom as far as possible. But when that budget is further and further and further, and we have 80% of our money going out to all of our salaries, and where our support structures have been there already, it would be difficult to find a possible not to touch the classroom. So I expect we understand where you're coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Singer?
Thank you. Can I ask you a question? I understand all that, I could say that way, and I also understand that you made the decisions that are amazing. Have there been any paid reasons for the cabinet, or have they been raised?
Over the past several years, that...
Let's talk about last year, last semester.
Well, then, that issue comes up at the end of the school year, in June. The superintendent will send us a proposal, this has been common practice over the last several years, last year or at least two years, he's frozen. And so I can't tell you ahead of time what would happen, but it's in this economic environment, it's probably very difficult. That's what we speak about for the board itself. That's the issue that comes up in June and July.
I think I should direct that to Dr. South. Do you guys have intentions of raising your salaries this year? Do you look at the fact that teachers are going to be eliminated, or are you going to vote for it?
I'd have to study that, quite frankly, because we've had two years of zero, I'd have to look at in terms of what we can do. We're going to, I'll be very mindful of that. I've been that way in the past, I'll be that over again. I have a sense of fear in support, I have to handle as well. I mean, your administrators, your teachers, your cabinets, your other folks, they've taken free, they've taken furlough, they've done. And it's not a popular answer, I know, but in honesty, I'll have to study that. This year, we started, my service frozen, and they furloughed, where I was received. I still have to be able to, both them and I, and the board, and so they do or not, where I'm going to.
Is that, oh, I would say, $20,000, $45,000, $26,000, $27,000 speaker? I encourage you to read.
Your own, Mel?
Right, so to share to the doctor, asking whether Dr. Glass, on a 1.8 and 3.0, well, we believe this process, early Dr. Glass, who mentioned, also issues of article, which is sort of one of the main issues. So, can I correct in assuming, is this what appeared at the beginning of your presentation, that these particular plans or these options, that can be cleared by art, or they don't need to be cleared by art? In particular, MRI poses?
They don't have to be cleared. MRI showing us a common form is an increase in our test course, that's a lot of my thinking.
So we close the school without, without part of the...
Other additional consideration, one of the turnouts here, states that the city's 115 school system being in need of improvement, are not going to halago it very closely? Does that mean we have schools that are in actual failureism?
We have, those schools that are Title I, the ones that are governed by that law. Our high school, it is, even though it's not Title I, of course, it's only with using. So we have schools that are in need of improvement. Moore Street School was the first identified, it's out of that, others are in there, how many do we have? Four, five?
It's a great question. There's a piece, I think, that's very important to realize, and it's one of those hidden kind of things. The Obama administration recognizes that there are major flaws in the no child left behind, which the legislative package has started identifying schools as failing schools which schools need improvement. Currently, the newest finding, which was predicted before, is that if this no child left behind legislation continued forward to its termination date of 2014, 100% of the schools in the United States would be identified as schools in need of improvement. It was a ridiculous, it was a great, great program in terms of mobility, this no child behind, but in terms of the methods that they use, kids just don't grow. You know, you have to go 4% this year, and you have to go 2%, and you have to go 3%. It just doesn't happen now. So the other thing I think that's critical of that, as South said, Moore Street School, I don't know of any other school in the state, I believe there are a couple others. Moore Street School is the first school in this calendar that came off the list, which is unprecedented, and knew so much. The Low Tide Foundation recognized them for excellence at first, which is a very good family, of all the schools, of all the schools in the country. So the work that's being done is very smart, very mindful. The problem is, and guys, we go back to what Mr. Riley said, we really get the idea that, that everything's buckling, in this economic environment. And so we're not commenting on some of these people, we're just saying that we're grateful for 1.8%. We're just trying to hold tight to everything we possibly can that's kind of sacred for us. So in the spirit of total transparency, we want to make evident for our plans, I thought, but this has been something that has to first go into the board, when we decide over whether we do this, we don't do that. But what you saw here is a pretty good prediction, I hope you... 100% may not come true, but I think about 90% of the results will actually happen.
May I share to the question of your glasses? How did you become aware that no range intermediate is the proposed school for, it basically is the team of the classroom, or proposed? How did that come to you?
I don't know. I can use...
That was part of the study that started last spring.
Yes, my name is Bob Luskey, and I'm in charge of this committee that's looking at, I've been working with State and Danbury. We began last spring that we get schools, and the way the process started is when we focused on this going to move out, we posed the question of being, what are we going to do with space? As it turns out, it's like not yet, we've not been able to be aware. But we decided to look at some of the needs of the school system, particularly the enrollment issues at the middle school level, and we had to start to look at the process to say, how are we going to address that situation? We kind of took it as a given that the city would not be building new school any time soon because of financial problems at, you know, local state level. And we looked at demographic information, each of our schools standing separate, and to see where projected growth in the future would probably come from. We had a committee of about 15, 18 people, consisting of several principals at the elementary middle school level. We had central office, white staff, central secretary of maintenance, colonial transportation office, and we had about six, seven parents, who had worked with us over the last several months.
Do you have any teachers to talk about?
No, teachers without, as part of this particular group. Because we're not focusing on any particular school, we were focusing on what, space issue, not a program issue, space issue. As we proceeded, we looked at various actions, what could be done. We had a mind building that would be large enough, 2,000, 300 schools, and that eventually went through by a planning process. Danbury will need a 300 school. Once again, we know we're not going to get money for a new building, we had to look at which building would accommodate it, and we kind of broke it down into a two-step process. First, we saw what to set for ourselves, what can we do, and then we needed to spot that process together. Second part was look at more of a long-range process, given the demographic information that we have. I believe that, as South mentioned earlier, the elementary level, numbers are all over the place. Sholto Rock is projected to grow by about 57%. And some schools, like Great Plain, will lose 20%. So what we looked at and worked with was before, what could we do, recommend the school would was the cover as option one. And option two would be, during the next school year, just about a long-range planning process of a district, they practice it. Most school districts have to leave the district every seven, eight years as a manager lab. Danbury does not re-district in the past 16, 17 years, and some of it way over due, and the demographics that I'm looking at now are really decent away. The big issue, we get back to these specific questions, not the range, is both the size of building, two was the proximity to King Street, Millridge, Cactus, and such, really contiguous boundaries, where these are student moving. And the fact that that would be the least destructive plan was the cover, these numbers of students, you know, move. And by a process combination, we, three different scenarios, and Millridge was one that made no sense, because that the school, most likely located, that the candidate third school, the school in the paddles and a ladder right down the road to candidate hour. So... Right, and that's where most of the inside classes, or five inside classes, currently not filling.
So, excuse me, am I accurate in saying this is one of planning decision versus a budgetary decision?
It began originally beyond what you as a planning decision, but obviously, because the budgets of scenario became obvious, that it could be some cross-stakes for next year for the school, if the budget chooses to go down this road. Then second, that's the sound indicated, what is not, wanting to improve this?
It's like said...
Yeah, they're aware of it. The committee reporting to them why the committee has been working, but this would know what decision, on whether or not this would happen.
The only one before that was the criteria, if we don't do that, then we have to directly make more decisions. So by doing that, we just move everything, say those positions, we have to see a pattern.
If we were to increase your budget, now I'm not saying the 2.29, but if we were to increase it by 500,000 or 600,000, what program do you use?
We're going to have nothing against that. We give not the, not the mayor's budget.
We give you 600,000, that's what we...
I wonder what the mayor...
We recommend, what we do, we overlook at the teaching positions. You know, I am not enamored with losing the elects at the middle school, I think those youngsters should have those experiences, as we already got there back. I think we should look at the class size issue at the secondary level. We, when the group retired last year, many courses were not supported, and there were more students in study halls where we don't want to see them. So we would, from our criteria lens, we would look at is how do we put people back in? 500,000, we can do it, we got to weigh the value of how the least impact was a full day kindergarten versus the elects at the middle school, but we would put teaching positions back. That would be one of the first places I would have the board look at.
Is it possible, if we could put together packages of 500,000 packages, if we were to give you five, as supply funding, or something?
Let me try to answer it, let me try to answer it this way, if it makes sense. If you look at the original budget that we recommended, it cuts it, not on the second round, but it must, it didn't, it didn't work out the way it should be going to supporting the programs that we have. If you gave me chunks of 500,000, what would I do? I mean, it's a matter of just going to here and say, I'm telling you, we put teachers in the classroom as often as we can, would support the work that's going on in the classroom, it would be terribly sensible, and then we add it back in, we would put it in another areas. The board is very concerned, if we look at that sheet there, the $60,000 curriculum activity, you might ask, where did the six come from? What was on the table, the conversation, was because of the city programs at ninth grade, maybe we don't have an eighth grade experience, second grade in high school, and let the city take care of that, and the kids play, and we keep our ours and J P. That's how we came up with that. That doesn't make us feel good, because we know that our kids need to be connected, they start out in the eighth grade, they have a code and tradition. I looked at all those things and tried to give our kids a well-balanced, through 60 experience, Dr. Bell last month. I don't see other things going in it. The tax code thing is an issue, but I don't increase that, no. Because it is where it is, but I go look at trying to give our kids the right experiences. And we have people that are working, you know, you looked at that overtime thing, it annoys the heck out of us as well. And that's one of those areas, they go, one way, you just have custodians out, they have a lot of the Q and A days, we have to pay, he has to make transfers in. So when we look at some of these accounts, they're based on some history as well. But I try to keep those, just so that we don't go into later on in the year and take away some programs. That's why they're stacked at that level. But I put money back to teachers, my cap would support that, I'm sure.
I have another question, I don't mean to get off track from Dr. James's question, but during your budget, you were saying that, or that on your book, talking about teachers at the end of the year, putting in more supplies, they can either receive, and then buy and pay at the end of the year. Does the procedure change much? I mean, I've never heard of anything like that, that nobody oversees the teacher device, but at the end of the year, they hand in the receipts, and then they get reimbursed for what they spent.
You got some teachers. I mean, I won't, I won't be the first to tell you, as they go around, and I want to thank you, they go out and supply a lot, I haven't seen any receipts to me saying, please pay for this construction paper.
No, Colleen, you have a loss there, probably was a comment that I wrote. I would say on average, this is Matt quoting a bill.
You guys came back to the board last year and asked for more money.
Well, I think it was my comment that may have kind of sent you off a little bit after my call. What I shared was, on average, I would say our teachers tend to be paying 800, 1300, 1500, maybe $2,000 a yard in their own pockets, that we don't reimburse them, they just do it. When I was teaching, I would do the same thing, they don't ask for reimbursement either. But if we were to reimburse them, we would have hundreds and hundreds of people coming forward, so we could put 200, 300, 400, $500,000 more into our structures and supply account to pay what we spend on our own pockets. That is not compulsory, that's just what teachers tend to do, it's kind of, that's our belief, that's just my comment.
It was like them, I'm sure.
Thank you.
We have any other questions? I think this is a problem, I question that.
Here comes 800,000, really important. And one direct question, really, to the director, I am from the school board, and needless, no disrespect to the teachers that are here tonight, but what I want to know from your long rope is, if the teachers here were graciously step forward and offered to suspend a step this year, what would be the possibilities to avoid education?
A step or a raise.
I'm sorry?
You mean a raise before you say that.
I'm sorry, no step.
You actually mean a step.
No, suspending a step.
Okay.
Not passing, you're just suspending it out here.
I believe the average step to be, according to my, only possible, 1.2, 1.3%.
I believe so, I don't have that data with me, but I think that's about.
It's safe to have that, I think, at about 1.3%. 1.3% approximately 50 to 55 million dollar pool, with amounts somewhere to come about 600, 650,000 dollars.
I should also point out that teachers last year, we did have, in the year we're in now, we have three pro steps this year.
Did you have any final comments with the new plans?
Are there any teachers that'd like to make any comments tonight?
I'll be a brain, I'm right up there. My name is Melissa Loret, I'm a fourth grade teacher at the AIS Magic School. I also live in Danbury, I was born here, raised here, and I am a proud member of not only the community, I'm sorry, my dad was the teacher, I'm a proud member of not only the community, but as an elementary school teacher. Tax increase, I'm not interested in it either. However, I look at it as kind of a circle. If you take away the kids' education, parents aren't going to want to move into our community. Houses are not going to want to be sold. Excuse me. Therefore, our community base then starts to decline. Businesses, my father is a business owner, small business owner in town, he's struggled, he's seen the best and the worst, he knows, we all know, what cuts me. My concern is for the kids, for the future of Danbury. Danbury has done completely right by me, and I want to see that brought forth to our students. And I think if you cut our budget anymore, you will be cutting into the classrooms, because there's just, there's nothing else to cut. And in response to the custodians, I know it is extraordinary, a lot of money to pay them, however, what they do is important. They clean, so we have healthy kids that stay in school, we have healthy teachers that come to school, so we're not calling out sick. And I think that is an important thing to take into consideration. So, I beg and plead with you to please stick with the mayor's budget. It's slim, but we've done the best we can with it, and I hope you can appreciate what we do in the classroom and respect us enough. Thank you.
Are there anybody else that'd like to?
Hi, my name is Maria Sartino, I'm an oral language teacher at AIS Magic School. And I find it very disturbing that oral language is not considered a priority in our country, where we're outsourcing our people. I call Hewlett Patterson, I talk to someone from the Philippines who speaks French and English, I talk to someone from Sri Lanka who speaks Latin English. If you call send in mobility, their customer service reps are in Mexico, and they speak permanent English. Okay, and there's a joke, what do you call a person who speaks three languages? Trilingual. What do you call a person who speaks two languages? Bilingual. What do you call a person who speaks one language? International. And I think it's very sad that other countries are not only to teach their children one extra language, but now Europe's only two extra languages. And to find that the countries that are not as industrialized as us are speaking two and three languages, means me and what else? I'm sorry, I am, I'm embarrassed, because to talk to people who have come and lived in shanties and they can speak two languages, and also those who come up and using four classrooms, and they'll speak one. And it's a known fact, it's good investment, you teach your children another language, it includes their English. I find myself many times teaching oral language and explaining to students what adjectives are, because they can't remember. So I'm not only teaching Spanish, I'm even teaching English, and I think every little language teacher will tell you the same. You're defining what nouns are, what adjectives are, what adverbs are, how to conjugate the verbs. We imply our main connections, we always need connections. That's part of the commitment standards and the other standards, we have to make connections with our, subject words. So I find it very disturbing to take oral language, not to mention my little support in Danbury, three women college, and everyone in the community, three years of oral language at German college, because my students, my children, were high on the streets, and everyone in the community went to college, three years of oral language. If you take your life in a scientific way, you are giving them nine to 12 degree oral language. You're those children who finish in the side, they can accept grade, high grade, two years, and they go to technical school or on the side, some college in the section, they most college. Appreciate it, Tom, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to?
Hi, my name is Kirsten Klein, and I teach the Multinighty School on Elster Avenue. And I'll start by speaking, I really understand the impact, because I've had an unemployed husband for 18 months, so I truly understand. But I look at my own family, my kids come first, and I look at the school system, which we moved into Danbury because of it, and I worry. I have one daughter who's struggling, if she's in class of 26 or 27, what's going to happen with her? I have another daughter who picks things up like this, and she's happy. I worry about her, how is a teacher ever going to be able to enrich my child when she has, or he has 27 or 28 other things to worry about? So, although I am a teacher, I think for a parent, I'm going to be, please really think about the ledger. And I also want to thank the board and the cabinet, all of them.
My name is Hart Fernandez, and I teach all day for the Magic School. I've had the opportunity to teach kindergarten for 30 years, 20 years. I taught half-day programs, I taught extended day programs, and all-day programs, and I have seen the benefits of an all-day program with a pair of hats on, on a student. I have 16 D L students in my classroom right now, about 21, and I know what the parents do for us, and the importance if they have on our education, our students' education. And I do feel that it will impact our community, if you take an all-day program away, and the parents, and the importance that they have on our students. So, I would please, I'd be very concerned.
I didn't get your name, can you just give us your name again?
Hart Fernandez.
Can you, can anyone, Hartman?
Yes, Fernandez.
I want to get as many comments in as possible, so maybe if you kind of, at least with the applause, that would be helpful.
So try to make this as sure as possible. When you asked me to speak for five minutes, I actually didn't give you a week's notice. If you wanted to speak all day, I'll start out right now.
We don't have all day.
I know. But it's not easy to speak shortly, but I will say this, my little maid is Churchill, and I'm asking for blood, sweat, and tears, and a reexamination of this budget, to keep the student count down as far as possible, less than it is now. That's what I want, I get $782 a month, and I'll give you another $5 a day, if that'll help. I don't know whether that's a marginal income or not, but I think it's on the low end, correct me if I'm wrong. I will give you blood, sweat, and tears, I'm a Churchill, and I believe in kids, and they should be given every opportunity that they can possibly get. That man, and that man, and those others, have come out in support of the kids, and I think they should be listened to. I just encourage you to listen to those two men, as they fight for teachers in the classroom with fewer students per teacher. I should end it right here, I suppose.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say one thing, that, also as a council, we cannot change any line item on this budget, we don't have that authority. So, when you say that we can cut, you know, electors or day kindergarten, that is not our purpose to do so, that's the board of ed's job to do so. All we do is just give you that one month, so, let you know what our job would be, so, we don't tell them how to spend it, we just give them the authority money.
I'll take one last comment, please.
My name is Jacina, and I'm a child teacher, and I'm a child at AIS. And a couple things I will mention tonight, but it still seems to be moving, that's not really addressed, which education, I know that we have a $20,000 grant that was taken, I'm assuming, out of budget, because we got to do that. But I'm concerned about that, that hot dishes are running, these kids with learning disabilities are also in the business. And when you're saying that we're going to be taking away math specialists and linguistics specialists, no wish, and these students are going to be coming to chemistry, I'm concerned about the resource base, I'm concerned about what support system is going to be there for the kids who are identified as special, as special needs. And on top of that, we have kids that don't qualify for IUDs, who also have learning disability or learning challenges. And when we're talking about middle schools, where they're not going to be offering arts or music. These children, that's, a lot of these children are the creative in our society, but if there's nothing there for them, what is going to be their incentive to go in intensive? We already have that problem, we already have the self-lost problem, where the majority of the kids, if somebody's playing math, 9 to 10, or, I mean, Dr. Goss playing a little nine, or, or joyous, but we have the truancy and the juvenile justice, these are the kids that are wanting to improve, because they're not getting support in the classroom. And just to add on to that, too, I also think that kind of involves the Danbury hasn't vanished. I am a product of the Danbury system. When I went to Lawview, it was way overpriced. When I, you know, I did go to Danbury High, I went to MacLiff, but at that time, there was racial challenges at Danbury High School, no rights. But at that time, we had all these social challenges, but the biggest thing we did have was parent involvement, the parents were in the schools, helping the teachers. And I just don't see that as an open option, right now, we talk about it, but I just don't see it as effectively, as a safety must hold, as transportation, or just a disparity among the schools on that topic. And when we're talking about $27,000 for lunch support, when you have parents that would be willing to volunteer their time, that's $27,000, and you go back into the classroom. So, besides a bit of budget, if we should, I'm asking for options that will be open, and more transparency, more communication to parents. I haven't seen the actual line item budget, to see where the money is going, so I challenge the board of education, give that information out to the parents, so we can see exactly where the money's going. Because you all have come to us and said to us, come to a committee meeting, and, you know, give us some of your ideas. Well, it's very difficult for people to come with ideas, because they don't have all the information they need. We're all very smart people, and I'm sure that we all can be very creative, but if you don't have the right information, you can't assist in the way that you're hoping that we might kind of step up. So I just ask that, you know, you think about the children who, ma'am, I mean, I understand that we have a senior, and we have results that we have, and we we have a scheme to, and we have results that we have to be legally, to meet our mandates, but we do have students that we need to be engaged in a classroom. And when cutting these programs, you know, a lot of them also are, you know, when we're talking about the foreign language program, we're going into a global economy, the whole purpose of the Magic School is to address the fact that we're not, we understand that the world is trained, the advent of information. So why, then, I ask, are we cutting foreign languages when that's going to be one of the biggest things we're going to need in order to be competitive in the market we're in for? And we're talking about whole net too, budget. Where are the kids going to learn on the budget?
I would be there tomorrow, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that in the budget though, I understand, you know, we're all looking, but everybody's got to give, because as a taxpayer, we have to give a little bit more. As long as we know where our money's going, and it's going towards education, everybody can win on our taxes.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to add something on my own. Of our, of our taxpayer, sixty percent of your tax dollars goes towards education. So it's, I think that our state council believes in education, because the biggest part of your taxpayer dollars go towards education. Once that money is given over, as Ben said, once we deliver the fund over to the board of education, we have no say on how the money's spent. So teachers, parents need to be in contact with the board of education, and your administration, and go to the meetings, and maybe do some, maybe you could start something up with the parents, and get some people in there to help. I don't know, you might set off a few toes, I don't know. Okay? But anyway. I refuse to believe that this, the school and this budget is running as lean and mean as the cost link is. Not fully funding the fourth request, put down to teachers' positions, teachers' or positions. I believe the board of education and its administrators do everything possible to keep teachers in the classroom. Because we're together with the funding invited, I guarantee there's money in this budget somewhere, somewhere. And speaking as a small business owner again, we simply always do more with less. Our employees are the last place people look to make cuts. Families of business are walking a fine line right now, and we must prepare for what the future may throw at us. I urge the school board and this committee to be very careful, as we are steward of our taxpayers' money during these times of uncertainty. And the reality is, I will be supporting the mayor of the board to this process. Thank you.
Any other comments? Um, can I add something?
Okay, Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. O'Grady?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept the mayor's proposed budget regarding the board of education budget allocation, at a hundred fourteen million, one hundred three thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars.
Any discussions on the motion?
You know, I think, I was still at the year of the board of education, to see if any kind of fiscal recession that they would propose, to see whether or not, to be with either any type of increase, what would they do with that? I mean, I think we're kind of rushing, I think we still have some time before we have to make that one, I suppose. But I think we should give them the opportunity to come back with us. This was the first time they actually saw the cuts quite out of the umbrella. I think they got, they have a meeting tomorrow night, I believe, and they're going to go over those cuts, so I think we got to give them at least one more meeting.
I think, well, we're going to have a public hearing, and then we're also going to have a meeting, and we'll have time for them to come to us with actual documents and actual savings. But for right now, I don't see anything in writing, and I want to move forward. We had a workshop, we've been through it. I personally went to every single one of their board meetings, and sat through their finance meetings, and I understand the difficulties and what they're trying to achieve, but motion has been made, I believe, with second?
If I may just a little point clarification, that the education budget, which is inclusive... Well, it's health and welfare, that's correct. That was one hundred fifteen million, eighty-five million. Are you looking at the total for? I think you said the board of education budget. Oh, I'm sorry, to include the schools' health and welfare allocation.
All together. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Motion carries, I'm going to ask for a motion. All those in favor?